Okay, we'll call our regular business meeting to order and we'll ask the clerk if she'll call the roll.
Mr. Blake Moore.
Present.
Ms. Raskin.
Here.
Chairman Whitfield.
Here.
Ms. Hart.
Here.
Ms. Stoltz.
Present.
All members are present. I do have, guys, one item here tonight that had come up earlier this week. I'd like to amend the agenda under new business, probably after our last resolution before department statistics. We have a lease agreement with one of our local businesses for a piece of county property that they're wanting to lease. And so I'd like to make the motion that we amend the agenda and place this lease agreement on the agenda right after our last resolution.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, do we have any further discussion to amend the agenda?
One second.
Okay, we've got a motion to second to amend the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and with that, we need to also approve the entire agenda. Is there any other changes or amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the entire agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Okay, you do have the minutes from our last meeting back on May the 26th. It's been provided in the packets. We have a motion to approve those minutes as provided by the clerk.
Yes, motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further comments at the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. One of the things that we had started back probably well over a year ago is asking our departments each month to come up and give a presentation about things that's going on in their department. And we did those several months in a row, and then our agendas got very heavy with a lot of activity on them. So we ended up pausing and we've had an instance where one of our department heads has come forward and says, hey, can I be on the agenda and get this started again? So Emily Sadler's here tonight, and she wants to come up and give a presentation. So I think we've got our technology all set up where we're going to be able to show this on the screen. And so the board members are not having to necessarily look back and forth. You've got a copy of the entire presentation there in front of you. So Emily, if you would like to come up?
And team.
Oh, and team, okay. All right, the floor is yours.
We're a team.
Ah, the floor is yours.
Okay, first, I'd like to say we are not public speakers. We are in animal welfare, so we are a little nervous, but we'll do just fine. I would like to first introduce my team. I am Emily, I'm the director. And this is Courtney, she's our manager. This is Krista, she's our customer service. And then this is Chloe, she's a kennel tech two. And then Jeremy and Brittany are not here, but they're kennel tech ones. So we're going to talk a little bit about operations. We're open to the public five days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. And then on Saturdays, we're open from 10:00 to 2:00. We are closed on Thursdays, that's the day that we utilize to take all of our animals to the vet. And Courtney and I normally do that, and we spend a significant amount of time at the vet's office. We normally don't get done until somewhere around 9:00 or 10:00 at night, so we gave up all of our vet appointments today so that we could come here and put on this presentation. We do encourage appointments just to better manage time, so we have a very small staff. So it does help us be able to spend more time with families and get them introduced to animals. But if people come in on a walk-in basis, we do not turn them away. We also work with people on an as-needed basis, so if their schedules do not work, we've had people come in on Thursday evenings to pick up dogs that have been spayed and neutered, Saturdays after hours, before hours, we do let people come in if they need to. So unlike many shelters in the area, we take in all sorts of animals, including birds, livestock, we've had a fish, we've had all kinds of animals. So that's just some pictures of some of the animals we've had. We've had parrots, we've had finches, we've had a zillion pigs, horses, donkeys, you name it, we get it. This is just talking about our operations. So we work really diligently to reduce the stress on the animals while they're staying with us at the shelter. So that's why we limit kennel areas to just shelter staff. So dogs become very overstimulated in the kennel area with unfamiliar people walking through. They don't really present well in the kennel environment, they're jumping on the gates, they're barking, they're growling, they're hovering in their kennels, they're just very stressed out in that environment. It also reduces public risk, like slip and fall, people like to stick their fingers in gates, tell us that dogs bit them, so that limits the public risk. It also helps us try to control disease spread. And then when we have meet and greets, we conduct them with a shelter member, we have like a team member pull a dog out, go out into the lobby. If it's a nice day and it's not pouring down rain, we go out into the play yard, out into the greeting pen, we advise people to bring their own dogs so that we can do meet and greets, make sure it's a good match. So we do require appointments for intake, because as you see, we get buckets and contraptions and cages just full of animals. And if we did not limit intake to appointment only, we would just be bombarded and we would literally be euthanizing hundreds of animals a month. There's just no way around it. So we do require appointments for surrender of owned animals. These are previous year's shelter statistics. We went back and pulled 2015, 16, and 17. You can see the intake numbers of dogs and cats, and you can see the amount of animals that were euthanized was very significant. And so we've worked really hard to reduce those numbers. So here's our 2019 shelter statistics. I came on board in July of 2019, and you can see we had a live outcome rate of 89.9% in the last half of 2019. In 2020, we had a 95.8% live outcome. You can see that we're doing adoptions, we have unfortunately had to euthanize some animals, we're doing return to owners, transferring to rescues. And in 2021, we had a 95.3% live outcome, also did a lot of return to owners, adoptions, transfers to rescue. 2022, those stats are through the end of May, we've already taken in 790 animals this year, which is very significant for a shelter our size. We've done 141 adoptions as of the end of May, but we did six adoptions on Tuesday, six dogs. We had two adopted Wednesday, we've got a lot of meet and greets set up for tomorrow and Saturday. We're going to be closed Saturday because we're participating in the Trails and Tales at Lula Lake, but we have, when we get back to the shelter at 2:30, we've got several people coming to do meet and greets and hopefully leave with dogs. So we've had, we have euthanized 32, we've had a lot of sick and injured cats come in that we've had to unfortunately euthanize. We've returned 127 to owner, and we've sent 503 to rescue. So so far this year, we're at 96.4% live outcome. And the national standard for a no-kill shelter is 10% or less, so we are significantly under the 10% threshold. Euthanasia, unfortunately, we do have animals that come in that we do have to euthanize at times because it is the kindest thing that we can do for them if they're suffering beyond repair, or animals that have significant behavior issues that we just cannot fix in a shelter environment. Our euthanasia rates at the shelter have been below 5% since 2020. And since I have been with the shelter, I came in in July of 2019, we have purchased five bottles of Fatal Plus, which is the euthanasia solution that we use. We've only used two and a half of those bottles. I was able to pull up records from February of 2011 to September of 2017, which is six and a half years, they purchased and used 200 bottles of Fatal Plus. And each bottle will euthanize 40, 50-pound dogs. So there's a lot of euthanasia solution in the bottle. So these are some shelter goals, to be proactive and get the homeless and unwanted animal population under control, that's our main goal. We want to be proactive, you know, we want to help the citizens. We're really focusing hard on spaying and neutering. If someone brings us a litter of puppies, we ask them, where's mom? Oh, well, I have her, but I can't afford to get her spayed, well, let us help you. And so we find sponsorship money, and we take the dog to the vet, we get the dog spayed, return it back home the next day, because we can't just continuously take litters from the same families over and over, there's so many in need. We assist owners in keeping their pets in their home, we have owners call us for food, litter, that sort of stuff, and if we have an abundance of it, that we get donated, we dole that out to owners to try to help them keep their pets in their home. We work really hard to educate the public on positive pet ownership, and then we work really hard to find homes for the animals in our shelter through adoption and rescue. Okay, this is our from incoming to outgoing procedures. So when an animal enters a shelter, we begin assessment immediately. We're looking for injuries, we're looking for medical ailments, we're looking for illness. If the animal's healthy, we vaccinate, we heartworm test if they're age-appropriate, we start deworming regimens, we rid them of fleas and ticks, if they're in bad shape, we bathe them, we get them all cleaned up. And then if the animal has health concerns, we immediately get in contact with our vet to see what recourse we have. If it's too bad for us to handle in the shelter, then we immediately start working to secure rescue. And if the vet suggests euthanasia, then obviously we will euthanize. So we try to get those animals out very quickly that have medical issues. We do treat them as necessary in the shelter, but as everybody knows, we can't absorb a large amount of medical bills, so we do have to transfer some of those animals out. It just talks about common illnesses that we are subjected to because we're bringing animals in from all kinds of environment with little to no vetting, parvo in puppies, panleucopenia in cats, kennel cough, I mean, there's lots and lots of different zoonotic diseases that shelters are susceptible to. So we try to get those animals out quickly. Knowing our shelter animals, so during their stay at our shelter, our staff works very diligently to assess the animals, we do behavioral assessments, we try to figure out their likes and dislikes, if they're good with kids, cats, other dogs. We encourage people when they do meet and greets to bring their pets, bring their kids. We had a lady bring a pig the other day to meet a dog, they have a little house pig, and so she ended up adopting her, she got to go home, so that was pretty cool. But we do a lot of temperament testing, Courtney and I stay after many, many days so that we can get photos and videos, and we try to be very transparent with our adopters and with our rescues. When dogs come in over social, under-socialized, we get a lot of pack dogs, we just had two packs at once, so we had 12 feral dogs and nine feral dogs from different areas. A lot of shelters would euthanize them because they just don't have, I mean, we're shelters, we don't have a lot of resources to handle that, but our staff worked very diligently with these animals, and out of all of those, we only had to euthanize two for behavioral. We were able to get the rest adopted and into rescue. So the knowledge about our shelter animals, like I said, is imperative that we're transparent with our adopters and with our rescue groups, and we build that trust and those relationships so that we are setting our animals up for a great transition and a great relationship with their new families. These are just some pictures of Courtney working with dogs, like I said, we spend a lot of time with dogs. Some of those are long-term dogs that we worked really diligently on, and they all got to leave. This is just a little bit about our adoption process, so all animals that are available for adoption, we do list on the county website and the Facebook page. We're working on getting the pet finder back up and running, apparently Walker County used to have a pet finder, so I'm working with Pet Finder to get that back up and running so that we can get them out there, it's just more publicity for the animals. Adoptable cats are fully vetted and ready to leave that day, so we take them, get them vetted, and put them in the adoptable cat room, you can come in and view them, staff will help you, and you get to pick your cat out that day. Some dogs are pre-vetted, some are not. If they are, they can go home same day, but if they're not, we hold them, get them spayed or neutered that Thursday, adopters can pick up the following Friday. So vetting includes spay-neuter, microchip, age-appropriate vaccines, deworming, heartworm test for of-age dogs. We do spend a lot of time with our potential adopters, we answer a lot of questions for them, we talk to them about our animals, we're very transparent, we allow and encourage meet and greets, like I said, with the dogs that they currently have in their home, we want to make sure they get along before we send them home and have a big catastrophe. And we just noted that adopters do play a very vital role in the success of the shelter, we do enjoy spending time with them, speaking with them, and our favorite part is when we get follow-ups about our shelter alumni. We get a lot of messages on Facebook, a lot of emails, videos, pictures of them with their kids in the floor, rolling around out in the woods, doing stuff, so that's really encouraging to our shelter staff to get those updates. I think the batteries are dying in this. Here's some of our adoptions, as you can see, people that have been to the shelter, they've adopted, some of them are the dogs in their new homes, there's kids, there's old people, there's a variety of people that are coming to adopt from us. I think the batteries are dying. Yeah, I think we might have some dead batteries. Do we have batteries anywhere? We don't? Oh, here we go, hold on, maybe I just had to put, oh, sorry. Joe, I'm giving you a little help.
Help, help. First, Joe.
Is that red button, you're not supposed to press the red button?
I didn't press the red button, I don't think. Yeah, I don't know what I did. Well, we made it halfway through. Hey, that's what matters. Okay, here's some more adoptions that we've done, these are just some pictures that we've pulled of adopters and their new pets. And this is just going to touch a little bit on transporting, shelter, and rescue partnerships. So the amount of animals that we're receiving from Walker County obviously cannot be absorbed back into our own community. I mean, we're not the only county that's having these issues right now, every county is jam-packed full, begging for adopters, begging for fosters, begging for rescues. Lots of counties have purchased their own transport vans, are moving dogs that way, dogs and cats, because we just can't absorb them in our community, they're coming in faster than we can send them out. So we have established several partnerships with rescues and shelters in northern states that have open space for animals, and they have adopters that are waiting for these animals. So they have really strict spay-neuter laws, they have anti-tethering laws, you can't just let your dogs run at large, you don't see that when you go up there, there's not dogs on chains, there's not dogs in the streets, you just don't see it. So they have a lot more space and resources than we have. And so a lot of times when we pull up, they have just groups of people that just swarm the van, they can tell you, Chloe, Courtney, we've all seen it. The first time I ever went on a transport up north and I pulled up, they were cheering, they were so excited, they couldn't wait for us to unload those dogs, I mean, they just bombard you. So it's really exciting to see. Some of the costs are reimbursed by the receiving groups for transport costs, vetting costs, and all that money goes back into Walker County. They send us a check, we deposit that straight into the Walker County General Fund. So this just talks about how we align ourselves with rescue groups that have the same core values as us, and spay-neuter is one of the big ones. So if we send our animals out to rescue groups that say do contracts, they send out puppies that aren't spayed and neutered, and then they don't follow up on those contracts, then those puppies are coming back into shelters as adults with puppies in tow. And that just completely defeats the purpose of what shelters are trying to achieve in 2022 and moving forward. So our partner rescue groups play a vital role in helping save the lives of adoptable animals that come to our care that are sick and injured. The animals' shelter is not able to absorb the cost of vet and medical care, like I mentioned earlier. So they can treat some of the more serious cases because they can fundraise and do the things that we can't do. Our partner rescue groups help alleviate the cost by assuming possession of the animal. So once they take that animal, we're out of the game, we're not liable for it, we are totally out of it, and they get to absorb all of the liability. So several partner rescue groups also transport, we work with a lot of rescues that have transport vans, and they are transporting just as fast as they can, we're all just trying to get them out of the shelters and into the best possible areas. We also have relationships with other shelters in Georgia, so we work with a handful of other shelters in Georgia, have a lot of good friends that are shelter directors, and those partnerships are very vital. We transport together, we share our knowledge, we support each other in our roles, it's just very imperative to have those relationships with each other. And without these partnerships, the majority of the homeless animals would pass away, they would be euthanized because we can't do it without each other, it's a huge collaboration and group effort. These are some of our dogs that have gone north. The dog on the top left came in, he was a bait dog, and he was completely in terrible shape, and we rehabilitated him, and as you can see, there's a puppy at the fire department, and then that lady adopted a dog that had sat with us for a really long time, and nobody around here was interested in him, so we sent him north, and he got adopted straight off the transport van. This is what it looks like when we transport, so you can see our van's loaded down, we've got all of our dogs ready to go. The top-left picture is people surrounding the van, pulling dogs off the van, they're excited to get their new fosters. This is some of our team. So one of our rescue partners has been very, very good to us, I've worked with her for a very long time, and we've transported a lot beside each other, and that's our two vans sitting at a gas tank, fueling up, getting ready to come back home from a transport, and then that bottom picture is Andrew from Madison Oglethorpe County that we work with, and then Jeff from Floyd County, one of my biggest partners in sheltering, and then there's Courtney and me, and Rebecca was Jeff's rescue coordinator. All right, so donations. We have a lot of community members that donate to the shelter, whether it be monetary, whether it be supplies, we greatly appreciate their donations, we get a lot of donations from our own community, we also have a lot of rescues and nonprofits that donate to our shelter. We receive huge donations of food, treats, toys, bedding, cleaning supplies, medications, things that alleviate our county from having to make big purchases. They are so supportive of us and what we're doing that they are just bringing in the donations, like, a lot of times more than we can handle, so we start doling it out to other shelters or the public, whoever's in need. The donations offset a lot of shelter costs that we don't have to spend on basic supplies and necessities. So here, this is what it looks like when we come back from transports, these are our vans loaded down with so much supplies, I'm just thankful we don't have to go over the scales, because I don't know if we can make it. Our rescues are very, very good to us. Community service and outreach. So since I came on in 2019, we've worked with citizens to assist with low cost and/or free spay-neuter through multiple animal welfare organizations. A lot of times if a rescue group takes our puppies, they'll pay to have mom and dad spayed and neutered, even if daddy belongs to the neighbor down the street, they'll get in contact with them, neuter dad. The shelter has assisted many citizens with dog and cat food, cat litter, a lot of people are on limited incomes, and they will call us and say, I can't make it to the end of the month, can you help us? And we say, yep, come on, we'll give you what you need. In 2022, we were the recipients of a vaccine grant provided to vaccinate public animals against very serious diseases, it costs nothing to the citizens. We've done three very successful vaccine clinics. At those public vaccine clinics, we have microchipped a lot of animals, we only charge $10 to microchip, and we've had a lot of people participate. We did have a lot of people that couldn't afford a microchip, so we sponsored that, and we got those animals microchipped, just because we don't want them coming in and us never being able to get them back home. And we were also able to recruit a lot of people for free spay-neuter, so they're spaying and neutering a lot of animals that we met at the microchip clinics. So like I said earlier, when people bring in puppies and kittens, we ask them, where's mom, where's dad, do you have any other animals in the house, and then we recruit them and get them spayed and neutered, so we don't ever have to go through that process again. And that helps us help other citizens in need. This is just some pictures from the microchip clinic, these are some dogs that came and visited us. The little black dog in the red car, that was his third clinic that he had been to, so he got fully vaccinated, he's ready to go. So this just talks about how we are changing lives, our shelter team values each and every animal's life that comes through our doors, we love and care for them as if they were our own pets, because after all, the shelter is our second home. We take pride in the jobs that we have been entrusted to do, and we hold the welfare of the animals at our shelter to the highest standard and vow to do what is in the best interest of each animal. So the next slides are just some before and afters, that puppy was surrendered to us in that condition, my whole team cried, and we just started working immediately, we sent it to a neonatal puppy rescue, and that is what she looks like now. The other dog came in via animal control as a stray, that is what he looks like now after sending him off to rescue. There's Champ. Champ is living the life on Long Island, he came in severely, severely neglected, and now you see he's wearing his winter coat, he's got several dog and brother-sisters, and then the other dog in the top corner, he was presumed to be a bait dog in a dogfighting ring, and he was in very bad condition, and now he lives with another one of our shelter alumnis on Long Island. So that's them on the bed. And then this was a neglect case that we worked, animal control brought us several dogs, and that's just one of many, and we sent her to rescue, and she cost them thousands of dollars to save her life, but as you see now, happy, healthy, has a great family, we get updates on them. And then these two pictures, we personally know the little boy on the left, his mom fosters dogs in Pennsylvania for one of our rescue groups, super nice family, they have fostered many. The picture on the right, that was a dog that we had named Liberty, we sent her to rescue, she was adopted, and we get updates on her all the time, and that picture had millions of shares on Facebook, it went viral, so it was really cool, we got a lot of recognition from that picture. But that's how we operate, that's what we're doing, and that's how we're changing lives for animals in Walker County. Now I have some more folks that want to speak to you guys.
Hello, as Emily said, I'm the manager at Walker County Animal Shelter. I've been working at the shelter going on five years in August, and I've been through four managers and one other director, and there have been many differences and changes made throughout those years. Firstly, when I started at the shelter, I was in shock by the number of animals that were being housed in the shelter. And to give a little background about myself, I'm not originally from Walker County, I'm originally from Connecticut. Where the animal shelter in Connecticut, in the town that I lived in, was located behind a police station and was only able to house 18 dogs. And the play yard of that shelter was used more to exercise the police dogs than it was to exercise shelter dogs. So when I say that walking into this county shelter five years ago, where all 48 kennels was double-penned, and there were multiple dogs and cats being housed together, was a complete shock to me. And like any other shelter or kennel that houses multiple animals here, there was upper respiratory infection, kennel cough being spread throughout the shelter, and even with the number of animals being euthanized at that time, the year I was still being spread like wildfire, and we were not vaccinating animals back then like we are today. Now I want to talk on a subject that is very sensitive, and that is euthanasia, and not just the statistics and numbers, but also the emotional and mental stress that euthanizing has on our staff. When I first started at the shelter, we were euthanizing many animals, ranging anywhere between 10 to 20 animals in a week at times. And just to give you some numbers, in the first five months of me working at the shelter, we euthanized 90 dogs and 215 cats. Fast forward to today, and now we may euthanize about five animals a month, and most months it's less than that. When we are discussing euthanasia of an animal, it is a team discussion, and everyone is involved, it's never a rash decision, and always very emotional regardless of the reason for that decision, whether that decision be due to aggression, behavioral, sick or injured. There had been many times where myself and the rest of the staff has cried over an animal that we euthanized because we can know it's not that animal's fault. We fight for each animal that walks through the doors, but in the end, it sometimes isn't enough. Our team puts in a lot of time and work with each animal to ensure that we have given them the ample time to decompress and feel as comfortable as possible in the shelter. Many animals that leave our shelter with rescue or adopters wouldn't have made it out under previous management, but those that don't get the chance to leave have left marks on our hearts. I cannot begin to tell you the number of conversations that I have had with God, asking him if we made the right decision, or the number of times I've cried in my husband's arms, saying how I felt like we failed them. Euthanizing is not an easy process for the animals or the staff performing the procedure, it is something that needs to be, and be thought about and understood, and it's not the answer for everything. Thank you.
A little bit of a harder one to like, come up to, right? Well, I'm gonna try to beat that one a little bit, I mean, that's kind of hard, right? My name's Chris Alexander, I want to tell you a little bit about myself, I love animals, so there's no surprise that I work at the animal shelter. I actually grew up in Walker County, I went to Rossville Middle School, Ridgeland High School. Throughout my high school career, I was in FFA, and for two of those years, I actually served as an officer, super proud about that. When I was going to school and work, and I realized I wanted to make a difference in this world, this world's kind of ugly and kind of mean right now. But fast forward to November of 2021, I started my career at Walker County Animal Shelter as the customer service representative. I was so excited, but a little naive, I thought it was going to be really fun, I was going to get to work with animals and work with people trying to make their lives a little bit better. But since working here, I have seen the good, I have seen the bad, and I have seen the ugly. So I just kind of want to share my experience at the shelter. You know, we've seen animals come in scared, you know, it's really sad, we've had neglect cases, abuse cases, we've had animals that are just lost, and they just kind of want to go home. It's hard to watch sometimes, it really, really is, but we do everything we can to kind of try to relax them, make them comfortable, we want to make them feel safe, right? We try to get them back home or into a forever home as soon as possible, we don't want to keep them there for a long time, it's stressful, right? Now, if you can imagine, being taken away from the environment you know, your home, whatever you may feel safe in, and you're brought into a strange place, loud noises, strange people, it's a lot, it's stressful. If I were an animal, not sure what's going on, I would be stressed out.
Back in February, there were nine dogs running in a pack on Bronco Road. Now with these dogs, our team was able to gain their trust. And it was truly amazing that they blossomed. What happened at first, they would hide in their corners in the kennels, and it was heartbreaking. After we worked with them for a little bit, they would come running to us. It was amazing to watch them get homes. Just because we did not give up on them, they got a second chance. And they didn't do anything wrong, they were just living. Really, the people had fed them, and we just kind of, you know, tried to slip it, make it a little bit better, right? For anyone who's worked in customer service knows how difficult it can be sometimes. You know, situations can be really frustrating for our citizens. And, you know, we're all humans with all emotions. And it's one of those things. People may feel stressed out, you know, if their pets are missing. I know I would probably lose my mind if my dogs weren't missing. You know, and people may feel stressed out if the neighbor's dog comes into their yard and makes a mess. You know, that's also a little frustrating. Whatever the situation is, it is my duty to do the absolute best to assist our citizens. I always give solutions, I try to do it with a smile. You know, one time I was on a phone call, and this lady, it was about some stray cats. She was really frustrated. I mean, I get it, I think it was tearing up some of her flowers and things like that. And you know, all I did, because I'm funny, I told her a joke. And she laughed, yeah, right, right? So she laughed, and you know, she told me that I made her day, just by being nice to her. Sometimes that's all it takes, is just being nice to someone. Which made me happy, right? Well, back in January, you know, there was a stray dog running at large. And a grandmother of the family had called us and let us know, "Hey, there's a stray dog." And she was telling me that she was house-sitting, and her daughter was actually in the hospital giving birth. So a lot of stuff's going on. And she was really concerned that the dog was going to, you know, jump on the kids, jump on mom. So she would like the dog to be removed. Well, we got the dog removed for her, and can you believe she sent me a thank you card? Just because I was nice to her. And you know, I brought that with me today. And I'll just go ahead and give it to you, and you can pass it around. I'm proud of this. All right. So with this, you know, it's just really amazing to know that I can make a difference in someone's life. And you know, it may be something small, right? But I was able to do that for someone, and that makes me happy. But you know, on the flip side of working in customer service, you know, we have sometimes people will be, take their frustrations out on me. Now, I understand it's not personal, but I do have feelings, and sometimes it hurts a little bit. As we all know, the shelter has closed our intake due to sickness. Sometimes people tell me I'm the reason that something bad's gonna happen to an animal. I've been called everything in the book, I've been yelled at. And sometimes it can be really mentally exhausting, I mean, truly. And it may be because I love animals so much, I don't know, and I just don't like being called names. But when I feel bad, and when I feel stressed, and I feel like I've been tore down, I look at that thank you card. I have it hanging up above my computer, and I said, you know, "I'm making a difference." You know, it's... I know that we're doing everything we can to help our community in the best way we can. But let me tell you what really, really, really just absolutely blows me away, is how passionate and dedicated my boss and my coworkers are. It's truly amazing. So I've never, in my life, and I've worked a few different places, have never met someone who sacrifices so much. And it makes me a little emotional, so I'm sorry. I first want to talk a little bit about the kennel staff. You know, they work really hard to take care of each and every animal as their own. You know, it's more than just picking up, you know, some poo, right? Or feeding them. It's showing them care and love and, you know, just sitting down with them. Maybe they just need someone to be there, right? Maybe giving them a little blanket. You know, it's just more. And I don't think people understand that. But at the Walker County Animal Shelter, we are a team. You know, if I'm cleaning, or like Chloe's cleaning, and if, you know, Emily or Courtney are needed, you know, they're right beside us, cleaning. It doesn't matter what job it is, they're not too good for it. They're right there with us, and that's amazing. They really lead by example. You know, I watch these two. They're working, you know, six, seven days a week, maybe as late as 11 o'clock at night. You know, I've been there with them sometimes. You know, they do everything in their power to save animals, and it's truly amazing. You know, they could be at home with their spouses, with their pets. They could be at their nephew's baseball game, but they're at the shelter. They're at the shelter, they're medicating, they're nursing animals, they're getting animals out to socialize them, like the feral dogs that we've had. They're shuffling animals around so we don't have to euthanize. And as an employee, I respect that so much. It means the world to me. With our team that we have, we strive to make a positive impact for this county. And seeing animals and people in pain can be like really ugly, really bad, and really just awful. But helping our community makes it worth it. I am very thankful and very blessed that I am a part of this group, a part of this team, that we help reunite lost pets with their owners, help animals get wonderful forever homes, help people to the best of my ability, you know, with some answers and things like that. And I am proud to work at the Walker County Animal Shelter. And just thank you guys so much for listening to me. I appreciate it.
She's our cheerleader.
I am.
My name is Chloe Clift. I've worked at the animal shelter for three and a half years. I did not write a speech, I'm just winging it. Shannon was the one that did my interview for this job. And one of the first things I asked him was, "Do we euthanize a lot of animals?" Because I just knew I personally could not come in every day and just euthanize perfectly sweet, healthy animals for space. And he assured me, "No, we do not." And in fact, when people bring in animals, whether it's their owner's surrender animal or an animal they found on the side of the road, the number one question we get, "Are you going to euthanize it?" And I am grateful that I can look at them and go, "No." Unless it is super aggressive, that we just cannot safely let the dog be adopted, or if it is so sick that the vet just suggested, absolutely not. Your dog is not going to be euthanized just to make space for another dog that needs to come in. Because most of the animals that come into our shelter are animals from you guys, from Walker County residents. We get more Walker County resident animals than we do strays. And sometimes it's not their fault, they lose their jobs, they can't all take care of it. But we get in more resident surrenders than we actually do strays. And I am grateful that I'm actually able to say, "Absolutely not." We get in some animals that even though they're owned by, they have an owner, they are in horrific condition. Horrific condition. Oh, I've had this dog for 12 years, that's my baby, I love it. And the dog is ate up in mange, skinny, starving, ate up in fleas. That's his baby, he loves that dog. We take that dog in, and let me tell you, when a dog enters that shelter, that is our dog. That is my dog. I love that dog, I take care of that dog, I learn that dog's personality. And I take care of that dog as if it is my own personal dog. And I just want everybody to know that you guys, you guys are extremely lucky to have these women right here. Because nobody cares about animals as much as we do. We are there late, we have taken home animals that are sick, bottle-fed animals that are probably not gonna make it through the night, we're up every two hours, bottle-fitting kittens because nobody else wants to. You guys are so lucky. So lucky. You guys are so lucky to have these women up here. Thank you.
So, you were talking pretty fast.
I know, I'm sorry.
Did you mention feral hogs, or did you say feral dogs?
Dogs.
Have you seen any feral hogs?
We've had a lot of pigs. We have a pig problem in Walker County. I don't know if you guys are aware of that, but last year we took in 30 set of pigs.
But the pigs, were they feral?
They're tame. We've had a couple that are a little aggressive, not feral. But the Department of Ag does have some stipulations on feral pigs, I'm sure you're aware of. And we've been in communication with our ag group about that. But no, we have not had anything feral yet. But I'm afraid that day's coming.
Yeah, I didn't know if they were, I mean, I don't know if they were in this area. I'm like, "Oh, some."
Yeah, they're in this area because, yeah, they're in the area, the Department of Ag lets them. And what happens is pigs are socialized, and then you let them loose because you don't want them, they got too big. And then once they're out of the wall, when they're on for a little while, they go rogue. And so we will eventually probably start having to deal with feral pigs.
Thanks.
So, question. Can you kind of give us an update on how the kennel cough outbreak is?
You would come back up to the microphone, sir, but I can hear your replies.
I'll try not to speak so fast. That's my nervous public speaker. So we've had kennel cough for a little while, and we've been medicating with an antibiotic called doxycycline. And that normally works on upper respiratory. But if you know anything about zoonotic diseases and upper respiratory, there's different strains, just like the flu, just like COVID. Any other disease or virus, there's different strains. We vaccinate on intake with Bordatella. But Bordatella is just a safety net, it's an auto-preventative, so it just covers some of those strains. Well, apparently, we've gotten some wild strain of upper respiratory in the shelter, which is not uncommon. Shelters deal with it all the time, boarding facilities, daycares, we're all dealing with it. So we've had it for a while, we've been medicating, and we noticed that some of the dogs were not responding to the doxycycline. And they were turning like green, snotty noses. So I contacted the vet and said, "We need to up our meds, we gotta change it up because some of them are not responding." So she switched us to azithromycin, which is a different antibiotic. And they've been responding very well. We probably have 10 or 12 that are still on meds. Courtney does her meds every day, she's my med person. But we probably have 10 or 12 that are still on meds, still a little snotty, but they're doing better. We're progressing, we're going in the right direction. We've been in direct communication with our Department of Ag representative. We have a great relationship with her, very transparent with her. We self-report everything to her. And then she reports it to the state vet, and then if they feel like they need to come down and do an inspection or check us out, they will. But they haven't because it's kennel cough. So I'm hoping that we'll be in the clear maybe by the end of next week. And then we want to do one big, huge, deep clean, pull all the inside and outside water bowls, scrub the kennels. We are doing adoptions, that was cleared with the Department of Ag. She said because it is kennel cough, and we do have a lot of dogs that are asymptomatic, so they're not showing any symptoms, they're past their medical regimen, they're, you know, clear of kennel cough. So we are adopting those dogs out. We've not had anybody come, we tell our doctors, but we haven't had anybody come back. Well, we had one person come back and ask for meds because their dog was sneezing. And so we filled one prescription for them, but everybody else has been sending us updates, saying that their dogs are doing great. So we're on the right track. We're following proper procedure and protocol per our vet and per the Department of Ag. So hopefully by the end of next week, we're hoping to be back to normal, hoping. But we will keep you guys updated for sure.
I want to say, you've been spot-on every time you've communicated with me with regard to your treatment plan. And I'm not a veterinarian, but I know something about treatment plans. And I think you were on top of it, your staff was on top of it. When you switched antibiotics, got on the zithromax, I mean, I think that's spot-on treatment. And I also reached out to the Department of Ag, they were in total agreement. And they educated me on reportable diseases and unreportable. Knowing that this situation could come up again, come up at any time. You mentioned earlier, reaching out to some resources. If this same situation came up three months from now, and we had to temporarily close the shelter for intake, what are some resources that you might be able to reach out to to assist in, you know, dogs that we could actually take in or put somewhere else?
So what we could do is reach out to rescue groups directly, but with strays, it's kind of hard because rescues are licensed by the Department of Ag, but they're not licensed to take in stray animals. So that's kind of hard. So what we've been doing for people, and the majority of people have been very cooperative and very appreciative, and we tell them, you know, "We got a little bit of sickness at the shelter, we're in direct communication with our vet. We've limited intake to bites and aggressive animals, we're working with 911." But if you'll send us a picture, we'll be happy to post it on Facebook. And we have reunited, I would say, at least 80% of the strays that people have sent us pictures of. Within, most of the time, within 30 to 45 minutes, two hours, somebody's calling and saying, "Hey, that's my dog, you posted on Facebook." We call the person that found them, said, "Here's the owner's information." They send us a message, we got them reunited. Everybody's been wonderful. We have had a couple of people upset. I know a couple of people have reached out to commissioners because they're upset about what's going on. But the bottom line is, is if we continue to bring in healthy animals, we're gonna continue this vicious cycle, and it's gonna shut everything down, rescues, adoptions, transports, and then we're gonna be in a really bad holding pattern. Like Jeff is one of my biggest partners in sheltering. And I know if he had capacity in his shelter to take on our stray population while we deal with what we're doing, he would. I know he would, because I would do the same thing for him. I have several shelter directors that would. But the times that we're in right now are very scary in animal welfare, and anybody here can tell you that, that's involved in animal welfare. Shelters are shutting down the intake because they don't want to euthanize, they're not taking in strays, they're not taking in owner surrenders, they're only working emergencies bites, the same situation we're in, but it's due to intake issues. Begging for adopters, your big, huge Atlanta shelters, they have like 800, 900 dogs in their shelters. I mean, it's crisis mode. So, I mean, I would love, in a different world, we could get other shelters to help us, but those resources are just very slim right now. Our other option would be to pay to have them boarded at a boarding facility, which is very expensive, and I would rather utilize that money helping the public spay neuter or something to that extent. So, I mean, that's something that I'll have to research, and I'll get with some of my other shelter director friends and ask them, you know, "What would you do in this situation? Have you been in this situation?" I have been in communication with some of them, and all they're really saying is, "Hang in there." You know, "We're going through the same thing, we're dealing with the same problems, you're doing a good job, just hang in there." So I'll have to do a little research on that. And I'll definitely, you know, come back to you with an answer. Some of us will put our heads together. Absolutely.
I just wanted to call you. I think you told us a story, because you're a better public speaker than you let on.
Everybody says that on purpose, okay?
You put on a great presentation, and I want to thank you all for coming as well. It's very informational for us, and we appreciate what you do.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agree.
Yeah, I have one question. What does you guys' work in relationship like with Animal Control and the directors of our animal shelter?
Well, we work directly with Animal Control, Krista dispatches to them. So the call comes into the shelter, you make your complaint, Krista gets it into the system. And then what the original plan was, is we put the GPS trackers on the vehicles, and we were gonna be able to like pinpoint who was in what area. So, you know, if Glenn's in the Rossville area, and we've got a call in Rossville, we could just radio him and say, "Hey, we got a call on whatever street, this is what it is." And Glenn would be the first in route because he's in that area. But what we have to do is anytime a call comes in, Stan, who is the interim manager, wants us to call him directly, let him know what the call is, and then he delegates who goes where, and then tells us who to dispatch. And so Krista or myself or Courtney, whoever takes the phone call, will dispatch it to them in the system and send them out the email text that we send. And then, I mean, we have had our struggles with Animal Control, I'll be honest. I like our Animal Control officers, I appreciate their positions and their jobs. I know it's hard because they're dealing with the public just like we are, and it's not always easy. Because we try to help everybody that we can, but you know, there's six of us, three Animal Control officers, and 70,000 citizens, so we're kind of, you know, emptying the ocean with a teaspoon. But we're trying. And I like our Animal Control officers, and like I said, I appreciate them. There are things that we don't agree on, obviously. And I'd be, you know, I'd be happy to talk to you about any of that stuff, absolutely. I'll talk to you guys about anything you want to know.
Thanks, Emily.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate you, guys.
Okay, at this time, we have on our agenda for any public comment, we do just ask that you, if you would, keep your comments to things about our county, or things that we can have an impact on, because we can't solve all the world problems. We would ask you to state your name, and it will give you up to five minutes for your public comment. Yes, ma'am, you first. Please come up to the podium so they can hear you at home.
I was getting make it tonight. Slippery garage. First of all, my name is Erin Reichbauer. And I have worked with helping Animal Control and shelters make the best that they can out of what they do. I think your whole staff obviously loves animals, and your whole heart and soul is in it. I commend you for that, that's absolutely beautiful. But there are steps that need to change. And I was here at the last meeting, and I was just disappointed that I see all your Facebook posts, but I never see anything that says, "We need help, we need volunteers." Can anybody that can foster animals come here and pick up these animals and foster them until we can find them a good home? I've also noticed that a lot of the animals that are sheltered out, that there is any home inspection on these properties. That nobody goes and makes sure that the person that's adopting this animal has the facility. that the person that's adopting this animal has the facility for this animal. And no animal in any state, anywhere, should be subject to living outside. If they're not an indoor animal, not that they can't go outside, but if they are subject to the elements of the weather, then that's just wrong. And I've probably made over 10,000, if not more, home visits for Animal Control and animal shelters just to make sure that the facility that they were going to or the home they were going to could take this dog. Also, I've noticed on the Facebook pages that, I don't know who controls it, but obviously there's comments that are being made on there that get deleted. So I don't know who does it or who controls the Facebook page, but they do get deleted. And I just put a recent one on there, probably like five days ago, and it was still there and I was shocked because I have put posts up there before that that were deleted. Why, I don't know. But one of the biggest concerns with me is with Emily. And again, it's not that I don't think you don't love animals, I know you do. I've spoke to you plenty of times on the phone. My name is Erin Reichbauer and I've spoke to you quite a bit. The thing is, you know, the educational part of a position, you're the director, right? Of Animal Control. You know, this requires a college education. This requires a degree to be able to be a director of Animal Control. Now, I don't personally know if you are, but if she's not, then give her the tools to make this shelter a better place. I mean, are you college degreed on animal shelters?
I don't feel like that pertains to my, to this topic of discussion.
Okay, I was just curious, I mean, if you were educated properly to run an animal shelter, because... Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to, okay. And I mentioned that to you when I was here last time, that someone in her position, it's a very, you know, important position, that whoever is going to be your animal director is educated, that they're educated, they have a college degree. It's a big job for Emily to have, you know, all this stuff with Animal Control Dispatch, this going to her, her going to Stan, Stan going, you know, to the officers. There's so much wasted steps that are being taken and I just really would love to see that improve. Again, I have raised over $9 million for animal shelters. That's a lot of money and that's a lot of hard work. And I spent many sleepless nights. I spent three days not sleeping just trying to help other states get, you know, get their shelters together. And I'm here to do that for you guys. I will come and help and volunteer every day if you need me, but just ask me. I can't go there because you can't get in most of the times. Either the gate's closed or no one's at the door.
Unfortunately, your time is expired.
Okay. But thank you again, you guys, for what you do. I mean, it's really appreciated.
Thank you for your comments. Who would like to be next? Yes ma'am. Please state your name.
My name is Mary Kate McCaffrey and I am representing Floyd Felines in Rome. And I am here in support of Walker County and Ms. Adler and her team. And I only get five minutes, so let me start. You're talking about not being a public speaker, you're a lot better than you think you are. Floyd Felines was started, we are a licensed 501 rescue and we are licensed by the Department of Agriculture to house cats. We are a cat rescue. We're called Floyd Felines and Friends because we all like dogs and we like the pigs and we like all the other animals. We are a support rescue for PAWS, Public Animal Welfare Services, which is our Floyd County Animal Control. 10 years ago, Floyd County Animal Control had the third highest intake of cats in the state of Georgia. There was a group of us and a supportive commission that got together and said, "What can we do better?" Because this is, this is not good. We were euthanizing
70 or 80%?
70 or 80% of the cats that came in. And that was a lot of cats when you've got the third highest intake in the state. You guys know what you're doing just here in Walker County. So we got together and I won't go into all the details because I don't have time. Fast forward to now, and our live release rate of cats is 96, 97%?
This year, we're averaging about 98%.
About 98%. That is because of the supportive rescue. And our rescue as Floyd Felines now supports eight different county facilities in Northwest Georgia. God has blessed us every step of the way. We have a wonderful relationship with Walker County. And I don't know anything about education requirements, but I know that this lady and her team are doing a remarkable job with what they have. Most shelters don't have enough, they just simply don't. And unless you've worked in this arena with animals, it's hard. Thankfully, and I've worked in rescue in Rome and Floyd County for over 20 years, and it's hard. And I have watched the trend go from the old school thought of euthanize everything that comes in because we don't have the resources, to now, we do have resources. How do we find the resources? And rescues are always going to support what they're doing at Walker County, what they're doing at Floyd County, what they're doing in Barto, Polk, Gordon, Harrelson, Chautuga, all of the counties that we pull from. Floyd Felines moved 3,500 cats last year alone. We don't just pull the adoptable cats, we also pull the feral cats that come in in traps. We get them fixed and we find barn homes for them. We're a private rescue. We can do things that a county, the county level can't do. So we are here to support you guys, to support Walker County and all the counties that we work with. This is a great team here and I hope that we can continue to support you guys in the future. Thank you for being supportive of your community.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Talking about being a private rescue and you can do things that, you know, we couldn't as a government agency. How do you get more private rescues involved? I mean...
Networking. We are connected to, rescue transport has become a big thing over the last 10 or 15 years. We are connected to other rescues all up and down the East Coast, all out through the Midwest. The trend has become, life matters, every life matters. Most of us that grew up in a spiritual environment believe that life matters. You know, you take care of your animals, your children and your old people. And that's what a compassionate community does. So rescues are out there, it's about networking. And we work, everybody at Floyd Felines is volunteer. We have 30 or 40 volunteers, not a single one of us get paid. We wanted to make a difference and change our community, and we did. And that's what these young ladies are doing as well. So we're happy to help find, we pull a lot of cats from Walker County and they go straight up north and they get adopted immediately, which makes Walker County look good. And when Walker County looks good, the rest of us look good. When we all work together, big things happen. And we just got our own transport van, so we'll be talking to you soon about some cats. Thank you, sure.
Okay, next. Yes ma'am, here in the front row, please. Please state your name for us.
Hi, I'm Sharon Rowan, I live in Rossville. I want to say thank you for all of you for doing what you're doing. I just had a couple of questions. I noticed on the Facebook pages that there are some people reaching out for you that are local rescues and fosters, but you weren't accepting, for some reason.
We don't see every comment on Facebook. For some reason, the algorithms does not show us every single comment. So that's why we put in most of our posts, "If you have questions, please contact the shelter." So if they call the shelter, one of our staff members will be happy to talk to them. We don't have a foster program. To have a foster program, it involves a lot of different things because we are licensed by the Department of Ag. So we have to do home inspections because they are an extension of the shelter. That foster home is an extension and our license covers that foster home. So if it's not a good place, I mean, it can get us shut down. So a foster program's a lot bigger than what people realize. And unless you've been involved and hold a license, there's a whole lot of working parts to a foster program. They can tell you they're foster based. It's a lot of work, we're a six man team. I don't really know when we would have the time to go out. I mean, we have discussed starting up a small foster program to maybe house animals prior to going out on a transport or something to alleviate space in the shelter. But foster programs are a huge, huge work in progress. It's a lot of work.
Okay, so with that being said, you said you work with the ones up north, like?
We work with, we work with rescues from Florida all the way up the North Coast, or the East Coast. We work with rescues some in the Midwest that they also work with. We have a lot of the same rescue contacts that we all work with.
And that some of those are fosters as well?
Under their own license, they have fosters, we don't. Once I transfer an animal to a rescue, that's the rescue's liability, we're out of it. We don't deal with the foster homes and stuff, that's the rescues.
I see, okay. All right. Do you vet all of the animals that come in that need it, like if they're being sick?
Absolutely.
And with a vet that you use always?
Yes, we have a licensed vet that we work with.
Okay.
If they need vet care, they receive vet care.
You spoke of behavioral issues for some of them that you may euthanize? What kind of behavior issues are you talking about?
Biting staff members, things that we can't correct in a shelter environment, aggressive dogs. We do get aggressive dogs in.
Were those strays? Were those strays or from someone's home?
We get both. We take in dogs from all over the county, but when they come in and they're aggressive and they're a liability to our staff and a liability to release out to the public and we're not going to send them out to rescues and clog up all of their resources because if we send them to rescues, then they just sit and they clog up the rescues and then that clogs up the shelters and it just causes a huge backlog. So we do make the choice to euthanize for aggression. It's the right thing to do for the county.
But there are other behavioral issues besides biting that you come in contact with, right?
Let me give you a library.
Those that are very coward in the corner, not willing to come out and...
Oh yeah, we work with them to the best of our ability. Now, if they've been with us for 90 days and they're not progressing, then we may have to sometimes make decisions to euthanize because rescues are, they can't handle all these behavioral cases because there's adoptable dogs dying in shelters that are ready for adoption. So they're not really pulling like they used to. A lot of times rescues used to pull behavioral cases, but they're not anymore. So that liability wise on the shelter, we have to make those decisions. It's our job responsibilities, unfortunately.
Do you network for other, like, behavioral groups that may want to take those kind of dogs?
I mean, yeah, we reach out to different groups, but like I said, the likelihood of those groups pulling dogs that are biting shelter staff are slim to none. And then when we transfer to them, they have a huge liability. And their plain water rescues just don't want it because they're foster based and they don't want aggressive dogs in their foster homes.
Yeah, I can see that because that takes a lot of training for that kind of dog.
Yeah, it's a huge issue.
Okay. Another thing I wanted to touch on was the local official representatives such as the Animal Control.
25 seconds.
Okay. While the citizens of the community deal with their responsibility concerning pets, strays and catastrophic messes in the Walker County shelter, law enforcement and county are to work together without grief and not put the citizens at risk and undue responsibility to handle the situations that are occurring in this county. Quote-unquote, "Take care of yourself" is what I heard, is certainly not what an employee of a county should be saying to a citizen. You are to be our guidance, our backbone, and how can you do this without proper training? Without common sense, or better yet, take responsibility and do your job and what's right. We all care about animals, we care about humans, and that's the basis of facilitating proper protocol. So if law enforcement takes care of their dogs employed with them, why do we not do that for our own community animals? If you don't uphold the laws, how do you expect others to follow? Why don't you work with people instead of belittling them, calling them names and disparaging their existence? We don't live in the wild, we're responsible adults who should be an example for the children who watch and learn and listen to everything around them. And that's the kind of example. All right, thank you.
I have a question right quick, just to clarify for me. I keep hearing foster and rescue. You know, and so what, tell me real quick what the difference is. And so like if we've got local rescues that want to be involved, we're going to be open to any local rescues that want to get involved. You would be open to talking to them and anybody locally? And I know we do it all over, but I mean...
Yeah, we work with, we work with East Tennessee Alliance for Animals. They're just above Chattanooga, they're in the Athens area. We work with the Humane Society in Chattanooga, we work with McKenna, we work with them. The local rescues that we do have issues with release puppies, they're dropping out puppies for a good amount of money on contract, which means those animals are not, you know, they're sending animals that we give them out that are unaltered. And we've had instances where those animals get brought back into our shelter from a Walker County citizen that adopted and now they're not altered, but they went through a rescue. Rescues are held to the same standard as us, they need to be spaying and neutering, that's what we are in place for. So, you know, we do align ourselves with rescues regardless of where they are, as long as we all have the same goal in mind and we're all working for the same reason, absolutely, we'd be more than happy to work with them.
Thank you.
But do you want me to clarify foster?
Yeah, yeah, please, I just...
If you have a shelter license, so we have kennel, we house everything in the kennel. Then you have rescues. Rescues are nonprofits, they're registered with the state of Georgia, it's a nonprofit and they hold an Ag license as well. But some of them have facilities, some don't. Some of them are foster based, which means you can sign up and say, "If you pull this dog from the shelter, I'll bring it to my house and foster it and then we'll get it ready for adoption and then we'll adopt it out or get it ready to put on transport." You're just an extension of their shelter license. Because if they don't have a facility, they rely on individuals just like me and you
Right.
to help them house those animals until they're ready for adoption or where they're going.
Okay, I just, I just was, clarification, because you know, we talked about space and you know, space is the whole problem. It sounds like that we just don't have enough space to accommodate.
If we built 1,000 kennels, we would have 2,000.
Oh, yeah, believe me.
We're all... Well, yeah, foster homes, she was just saying, not just anybody can get fostered. So foster homes do have to be inspected because they are, you know, governed under your license. You can get your license pulled if you...
Two different things.
And if you send a dog to a hoarder and you didn't inspect their home, the Department of Ag comes in and says, you know, "These people have 80 dogs in their home and they've got one of your dogs and you're in trouble."
Got you.
And that's one reason why I have not been an advocate for the county having a foster program personally because it would be putting our license in jeopardy if something went wrong. Also, if someone's fostering an animal through our shelter and there is an injury or a bite or a death...
Or they didn't out hit you by a car.
Then that's going to come back on our insurance liability as the county. So when we have animals at the shelter in a controlled environment with staff, we can control most of those situations, but if we're fostering directly out of our license, out of our direct facility, we're taking that risk and placing it all over our county and jeopardizing, potentially jeopardizing our license and also our insurance being at risk of claims.
So to clarify for me, just, so I understand that about the fostering. So rescue, local rescues don't fall under that same criteria as far as being a liability to us?
Well, if a rescue is registered with the state, then they have their license.
Right.
They're on liability.
That's all, yeah.
If you transfer the dog to them, it becomes their liability.
I got you, that's what I was just trying to understand is...
We're out of it.
Fostering comes, could come back to us, a rescue, they're in it for their sake.
Yeah, they're in it for, and they've got their insurance and license.
I got you, okay.
That'd be a good question though.
Yes ma'am, come up please.
I have something else that I need to discuss with the board, but...
Please state your name, please.
Janice Williams. But with what I've just heard, there are some things that I need clarification on. You told Ms. Nicholson that if a dog needs vet care, that you work with a vet and they get it when they need it.
Yes, if we determine that they need vet care, we do provide vet care.
But you posted live videos of DaVinci suffering on the floor with diarrhea and he couldn't walk. And your comments said, "Now he's trembling, he has gross diarrhea," and you were raising donations for him to go to rescue.
And within 30 minutes, we had commitment on that dog and he was scheduled to go out that following morning.
But he didn't.
Because we had a protest at the shelter.
No ma'am, no ma'am.
So we had to send him to the emergency vet.
Nope, you're losing a day. You're losing a day in time that it continued on. And he didn't go to a vet. He needed to see a vet when he came in. And that's what you just said that you do. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that, but that is what has happened. Um, now, I run a nonprofit for spay and neuter. When we did, when we formed our nonprofit, we specifically formed it not to do full rescue because we didn't want to appear in competition with the county. From day one, Shannon, personally, not professionally, because my reputation is stellar with what I do, there has been a personal grievance that you've had with me. The last times that I was actually at the shelter, I was doing adoption events. I brought food, I brought decorations, I helped show the dogs. The next time after the hack that I came with someone who was going to adopt, you sent the police after me. Chloe Cleft came out with a text message on her phone calling us effing bees and get off the GD property. She doesn't have to answer S-H-I-T to us. You knew that this happened. No one ever gave an explanation as to why that happened. And I haven't been back to the shelter since because you've said I'm not allowed on shelter property, but Joe Leguie says, no, you're welcome anytime you want to go. We do spay and neuter. We had a full schedule. I tried to reach the shelter to see, because they help with spay and neuter. We just heard that in the presentation. No one will take a call from me. And the, and it's based on personal and gossip. I've never said anything or done anything to hurt the shelter. And Emily Sadler went on the record with Walker County Sheriff's Department and said, "Janice applied for my job and I got it, and she's had it out for me in the shelter ever since. So your shelter won't work with me." You can clarify that. I've never applied for the shelter position. I've never applied to a county position. It's personal, it's gossip, it's drama, and it's hateful. I don't present myself that way to you all. I never have. And you can laugh all you want, Chloe, because you know what you said and what you yelled and the curse words that you said to us. It's on her, it's on her phone. So I would appreciate it if everybody treated everybody with respect. But what I wanted to speak with you, oh, I do want to know, what other counties other than Floyd are you currently working with? Hello?
Um, currently I'm working with Floyd.
Just Floyd?
Mm-hmm, currently.
Okay. What I wanted to speak with you about is the situation that happened Friday because my understanding from a meeting that you just had, that initially in the meeting, you were blaming it on me. I do, I'm very busy, Shannon. I do easy 20 hours a day. I was doing what my nonprofit does, taking a wheelchair to another area that had a disabled dog. And I got a call from the Rossville Police Department. And they said, "We are trying to seize a dog for a felony cruelty case. The shelter said, no, they won't take the dog because they're full. Shannon says no, and Animal Control says no." Why?
That was outside jurisdiction, okay? So we were not the first response of the call. It was the city of Rossville. Then when they called for assistance, our animal control manager went on the scene and stated that the animal did not need to come to the shelter, the animal needed to go to a vet and area.
Okay, Shannon, you were on speakerphone, on Animal Control's phone, and you said, "We're not paying a vet bill." That's what you said. Now let me help you with this, and I will help Emily with it as well because this is what the law is. And that's what she was referring to about the educational part. And if you had sent anybody to the training that was provided by the state prosecutor, the DEA, and our district attorney, you would have known this. It is no different, and I'll back up, the state prosecutor asked me to tell you this specifically. It is no different than if they arrest somebody or charge somebody and they confiscate drugs or firearms. There's a designated place that those things are to be brought to. Our shelter is that place.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Will you continue off of my five minutes and explain why you're not following the law with it and why you didn't?
We've got a lot of people here to speak tonight, so we're going to need to move forward.
But that's a question that I'm waiting for you to answer, Shannon.
Thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, sir, in the black shirt there? Yes, sir.
So hey, my name's Melvin Moody. I live in Lefae here. So before I start talking, how's everybody doing tonight? Good? Okay. So I'm here to discuss East Warren Road. So I think this has been a hot subject or topic of discussion for everybody. And many of you I've been able to talk one-on-one with. So I just want to say, hey, for those that I've spoke with, thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedule to, you know, speak with me on the subject, hear me out. So at the recommendation of David, David asked me to come speak to everybody here, so here I am. So I just wanted to give everybody a little bit of background around this road. And for those who don't know it, so in 2016, East Warren Road was a private road. That road has seven homes, has roughly 10 properties, all of which exceeds the rules for what is a private road. So due to some road conditions and issues, that road was petitioned back in 2016. And Mr. Byron Ray over there actually did the legwork to go around and have that petition done. There were many issues with the road. Some of the issues were just common things like potholes, just general maintenance from, you know, trees, overgrowth, that sort of thing. Then there's some major issues that were happening too. And some of those issues were concrete speed bumps that were being placed in the middle of the road with gravel on top of it, barbed wire being cut, putting in the roadway, putting on the sides of the road where you would have to do maintenance, stakes putting in the road by one of the residents. And then sometimes randomly, you'd have a giant rock just appear in the road that you couldn't bypass. Um, so in 20, November 17th, 2016, that road was adopted by the county. Byron actually got every signature from every homeowner with the exception of one. And this particular homeowner is where some of those issues are coming from. So I'll back up, I actually did have a conversation with that homeowner a few days ago. And he believes in that they own that road. Okay, so they, they believe that's their property and we should not have access to go through that road to get to our homes. And just to be clear to everybody, that is the only path that I have and we have to be able to access our homes. So 2016, that road was officially adopted by Walker County. Um, and then from there, what happened was they actually went out marked utilities and some of the road work was being prepared to be done. And then at the beginning of 2017, that work stopped. Now, I'll fast forward to 2020. When I, when I moved into my home, I went and did my due diligence. So I went and got my property surveyed. I wanted to understand exactly what I was buying, what I was signing up for. Um, so when I had my property surveyed, the, they surveyed it as a county road. And I'd be quite honest, if I knew upfront that I was going to have to maintain this road, I never would have purchased that home to begin with. It's a very long road and it takes a lot of maintenance to do so, okay? Um, so I've had conversations, there's a lot of issues with the road and particularly just trying to access the homes. And there's some other steps too. But from my vantage point, hey, this was a county road and that's what I signed up for. Um, I've had multiple conversations. I've put in iWork requests. I've really talked to about anybody that would listen. Um, I've spoke to Carlin at the road department. I've spoke with folks that do the code, codings, code control. Um, I've spoke to the sheriff's department. I get to this giant circle where I can't get an answer of exactly what we need to do. Um, and David was gracious enough, I've spoken an hour and a half with Byron, myself with him regarding the situation. If you look up this road today, and I actually got an email in the back of this packet, it shows that it's listed as a county road as of today. So that's why we're here and that's kind of what we want to talk about. So kind of my ask is this, what our residents ask is this. We want to know we matter, okay? We want to know we matter. These people want to know that they matter. Um, and we, our ask is for the county to own up for what it signed up for in 2016. And, and really kind of that's the ask. The road is a hazard, there's safety issues. And to be quite honest, if I go myself and knock down the speed bump that's in the middle of the road, these homeowners that live at the beginning of the road, they have guns on their side almost at all times. So you can imagine you'd have a much bigger problem on your hands if I had to do that. So that's really the ask. And so what I would ask for everybody here is, when is the next board meeting? Because I know I'm running out of time.
Two weeks from today.
So June 23rd, okay. So we want to know we matter. And I'm asking that June 23rd that we have a resolution of this. That's our deadline. And then after that, we'll, you know, we can discuss other things. And I'd be happy to discuss one-on-one, but at the end of the day, we want to know we matter. And that's it. So I'd ask everybody in this room, come out June 23rd, invite friends, family, anybody that votes. Come out here because we want to know that our voices are being heard. Thank you.
Okay, yes, sir, Mr. Pope, sir. Please state your name, sir.
I'm Jim Pope. And I'm here to discuss what we was discussing last week about the county manager. Mark, I'll start with you. You seem to be the leader on this. You spoke up first last time.
Yes, sir, I'm looking for information and, and solutions. That's your aim, so yeah, you speak to me any way you want.
How, how many bo- uh, members on this board are advocating or at least considering getting a count, uh, county manager? Did they pass a resolution? No?
We, we were advocating for information.
It's just information.
Just information.
I did that last week.
Okay. Uh, I wanted to refer to the law here. I, I assume you have read this law pretty thoroughly, is that correct?
What law are you referring to?
Uh, this law that establishes the board.
You talking about the Enabling Act?
Uh, uh, no, no. I'm talking about this law that establishes the board. Okay, have you read it?
That'd be the same document. That's the Enabling Act.
That's the Enabling Act.
You're, you're talking about the same document.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, section 10 there talks about the chairperson. And I want to read you the first sentence in, in that section. It says, "The chairperson shall administer the affairs and day-to-day business of the county and preside over the meetings of the board." How do you interpret that?
Basically, the way that it's pretty clear, he presides over the meeting, prepares the agenda. Uh, in opposite states, he prepares the budget, uh, you know.
Well, let's go back to the first clause here. "The chairperson shall administer the affairs and day-to-day business of the county." How do you interpret that clause?
Well, I interpret that to be just to, to administer the day-to-day activities, just as it says. And when we had, and, and so the, the reason that we even are looking at other options that are legal in our, our, our laws by the state of Georgia that, as that presentation was, is just looking simply to try to expediate and help move things forward because the chair will be the first to admit himself that with the board now, he's getting, there's four other district commissioners that are feeding into the pipeline of things that need to be done. And it gets to be, uh, it slows down and gets bogged down and then things aren't getting, aren't happening. And, and, and that's, that's why we're looking at things that would help out to move things forward for the citizens that, that elected us to be representatives. They expect things to move forward and, and policies and procedures is what our, what we do. So the board, as per this document that you just broke out, the board sets policy and procedure, and then the chairman administers that day-to-day policy and procedure. And so if the board puts into effect a resolution of some sort, uh, but by a majority vote of the board, then that's the chairman's responsibility to administer. Is that, am I kind of? I don't know where you're trying to go.
Well, is a county manager going to be in charge of day-to-day affairs, business? Or what, what would be the purpose of the camp, uh, county's manager?
The, I think, Mr. Jim.
What he's asking, that would take some responsibility.
It would kind of, it would free the chairman up to do, to do the duties that, other duties that are listed here in the Enabling Act as well. The, the first one's not the only duty listed there, Mr. Jim. If you wanted to go down the list of them, you're welcome to. And then go down the list of the ones that are responsibilities of the, the Board of Commissioners.
Right. Now, now, but it says on Board of Commissioners, let, let me quote here. It said, it says, "It self does otherwise provided in this act." So you can't, uh, take the duties it's given the board and overrule what's over here in this part, can you?
Uh, not, not, nobody's trying to overrule anything at all. But there is a law and that was on the books before we ever, we all voted for this board in 2018. Or I say we did, whoever did voted for it, who didn't, didn't. But in 2018, when this board was established by this Enabling Act that you've got in your hand, this law, Georgia law was already in place that gives a board the authority to, if they feel necessary.
Hey, hey, my time is up. I'll contain you next.
That'll be fine. Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Jim. Appreciate that.
Okay, anyone else? Uh, yes, ma'am, in the back? Uh, either one of you is fine. Please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Julie Wooton and I am the executive director and the founder of Waddle On In Rescue in Fannin County. We are Georgia's only nonprofit waterfall rescue in the state. I'm here because I've actually worked with Emily quite a bit. I've sat here, came in for a different reason, and I'm hearing all these comments and I'm like, something's not right. Um, my first dealing with Emily was two years ago. She called me at about 6:30 at night because they had just done a cockfight ring bust and there was a little rooster. She didn't know if it was going to survive. That woman met me at 1:30 in the morning in Cleveland, Tennessee, to save this animal's life. Um, today, that animal's doing great. We have since then taken probably 10 game roosters at least, um, which are very difficult to place. We've taken in ducks. I've worked with your animal control and I've also worked with your animal shelter. Your animal control leaves a lot to be desired on a professional level. Your shelter, I'm in Fannin County. I'm two hours away. When we had our county commissioners, um, I don't know if you know Jamie Hensley, but when he was running for county commissioner chairman, I'd actually told him he needed to come to Walker County and he needed to go visit your shelter to find out the way that Emily ran it. Because the way that she runs it is top-notch. I wish that we had ours, ours ran half as good as what she runs it. I've been in the, in the shelter many times. I've made many trips up here. I've done many meetings, meeting up with her. Um, and you know, we just got our own transport van, actually. It was the one that was shown in, in the video, donated by Tri-State Pet Rescue and Joshua Durst. We're actually looking forward to starting to work a little bit more with Emily now that we've got a transport van. Not just to, to move the animals that we do, but we're also in contact with Flynn Fields Rescue. They're the pig rescue in Jasper. TMMA Sanctuary here, they're another big rescue that Emily didn't even know was in her own backyard. That's another one that, another contact that I've given to Emily. You guys have a gold mine within your shelter. And I don't know if anybody knows it. I'm sitting here listening to these comments and I'm just kind of floored when people are talking about, well, what, you know, why are we euthanizing for an aggressive dog? Why aren't you putting it in foster? As a rescue, there's no foster that's going to take an aggressive dog. If somebody thinks that an aggressive dog needs to go to a foster, raise your hand and you go ahead and you offer it. Make sure you sign that liability waiver first. Because that right there is putting your county into a huge liability issue with lawsuits with injuries. But that was kind of a little bit off of what I wanted to do, but I just wanted to say how impressed I am with Emily. The others, I only know her because when Animal Control was bringing a dog in, and it was one that they were talking about, dog was scared. She climbed up in that truck with this dog growling and she literally was humming to it and petting his head. And I'm sitting here going, she's going to get bit, you know? She didn't. She didn't, but it was close. It's close. So, but, you know, I, I don't know what all the issues are in your county when it comes to your animal shelter. I know with your animal control, the two dealings I'd had, I've had with them, they're not somebody I want to work with. Um, the first issue that I did, I had some of your own citizens call me because there was a duck that was no food, no water, in a wire kennel in the middle of the sun. Your animal control didn't care. They told me it's just a duck, it didn't matter. Um, I called Emily, she couldn't do anything, you know? And that's something people don't. And that's something people don't realize, that your animal shelter, they're allowed to do X, Y, and Z, but they can't overstep and do what the animal control has to do. They don't have the jurisdiction. That duck ended up dying. Nobody cared. Emily did. Emily, actually, I was crying with her on the phone over it. The other, the recent one was, what, three months ago? Somebody had moved out of one of your residents and left a bunch of ducks and chickens behind. I got called in. Your animal control came over to help me. That guy literally stood there and did nothing. He's supposed to be helping me to catch the ducks. I told him how to do it. He stood there, and then he's like, well, I got to go to lunch. And at which point, he was, he was done. Called Emily. I said, next time I come up, if you're needing my help, I want you. I'm not dealing with your animal control anymore. Because I didn't find them, they weren't useful, and they weren't helpful. Your animal shelter, though, is the complete opposite. Your Emily, I don't know too many people at 1:30 in the morning what's going to be doing on her own time to make sure an animal's going to survive. And that wasn't the first, and it's sure not going to be the last. So appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, sir, come on. Please state your name.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Mitchell. I'm director of Floyd County Animal Control, Public Animal Welfare Services. I run both the shelter and the animal control portions for Floyd County. I've had the pleasure of working with all these ladies and the gentlemen that work at the shelter for the last couple of years. And I've also had the privilege of being all over the state of Georgia to work with different rescues and shelters. Been in many of them. I'm big on learning more. I go to different shelters to see what they're doing, see what they're doing right, see what I can implement, what I can't implement, what's working, what's not working. And I can say beyond a shadow of doubt, you've got some of the best in the state. That is no lie. I've been there, and I challenge you to go to the other shelters throughout the state and see for yourself. These people are very compassionate. They put their hearts in it, and they go beyond the normal limits that a normal, regular worker would do. I have seen them. She has called me many times in the afternoon. Hey, I've got this going on. Can we network together? Absolutely, we've done it. That's what we have to do. I've been in animal welfare from the time when we first started, and she can speak to it, where we were euthanizing everything. I tell you, it don't work. You can't euthanize your way out of it. Unfortunately, you can't adopt your way out of it. It takes, in Floyd County, we've had to take several different programs, and we're starting to see the results now. Community engagement, community programs, community pantry, what we can do for our citizens to help them educate them better. But the biggest thing is going through there and fixing the spay and neuter problem. We've started targeted programs with sterile feral Floyd felines to target our community problems. Because the only way to fix the issue is through sterilization. It's not through euthanasia. It's not through adoption. Rescue keeps us afloat. If it wasn't for us transporting across the United States, we'd be euthanizing every day. There's no doubt in my mind. I'm proud to say that her shelter, and you may not realize this, but your shelter has one of the highest live outcomes in the state and probably the southeast, and I would challenge the nation as well as Floyd County Shelter. And to me, that's something to be proud of, and it's something that you're lucky to have because most counties don't. There's also a nationwide movement to have shelters all across the nation be no kill by 2025. Groups that are putting that initiative on have unlimited amounts of resources that will help community programs. As a matter of fact, I've used them myself. Right now, the United States is sitting about 62% no kill. Anything above 90% is considered no kill, and your shelter's sitting at about 96% to 98% on average. So that gives you an idea of how far on the spectrum you are when it comes to no kill in the animal welfare movement. A lot of times, one thing I've learned in animal control, because I've been, I've dealt with the ones that have called me murderer, called me all kinds of names, and I've dealt with the ones, one thing that I've learned is, since going to this no kill movement, the community has spoke up for us and come to bat for us. They've engaged in our programs. We are now proud to say we've got a cruelty task force. We're partner, we're probably one of the few shelters in the whole entire state that's partnered with our sheriff's office, our police departments, where we do cruelty. We don't charge an ordinance violation. We put you in jail. And that's got the community engaged. And I'm telling you now, I'm going out there and seeing issues that we're normally seeing every day, but the word's getting out that we're targeting violations, and we'll prosecute those violations. If it's ordinance level, we'll handle it at ordinance level. So I leave you with this. You're lucky to have what you have with the shelter. I couldn't do it without them. I've put many animals of y'all's on our transport and took them up north and vice versa. That's how we have to do it, because not one shelter is going to be able to fill up a transport vehicle. And again, we get reimbursed by many of those groups, and those groups that we send to, they're not just some group we found on the internet. We background checked them. We've checked, make sure that they're, most of the ones that we work with have shelter veterinarians on staff. Most of them make their adopters go through a thorough background process before they adopt, and they have a meet and greet process before they even let the animals go there. As far as fosters, we also do not do fosters for the very reason. It's a liability issue. It's too risky to allow our animals to go into a foster home. We don't have the resources to go out there and check homes. I mean, I wish we did, but we just don't. And it's a liability, and you risk losing your license. So we don't do fosters as well. But like I said, I don't want to take up too much of your time. I just wanted to commend y'all on what y'all do have at the shelter. I can't speak as animal control side. I don't know any of them, and I'm sure they do wonderful jobs.
Thank you. Unfortunately, your time is up. Floyd County has been a phenomenal partner. I've been down and toured y'all's facility. Y'all've got an amazing facility, and y'all do definitely have a lot of community support. So commend y'all for that very much. I think there's one in the back. Yes, ma'am.
I'm back again. Last time y'all gave me seven minutes, so I'll try to get through. No. First of all, I want to say thank you to y'all. This has been such an informative meeting because I didn't know all about this. And if I was younger, I'd want to come work for y'all. But really, I just thank y'all so much. I, as I said, came to y'all several months ago to tell you thank you about putting somebody so compassionate in as director of the shelter. And since then, some things have changed for me, and I actually, I'm not, I finished up my term on the Humane Society Board, and I still kind of want to be in animal welfare. And I had a conversation with Emily that I wanted to start my own nonprofit. And I've kind of come up with the name, and I'm like, the Transport Buggy. One of my little dogs is named Buggy. And I was talking to her about it, because what I really want to do is raise money and help these shelters transport these animals out of the South. Because as we all know, this is a problem, because there are too many dogs and cats here. And so I had a great conversation with Emily about it. But my idea about it, and thinking in, you know, big terms, was to use Walker County as the role model. Because she has done such a fabulous job of getting these animals out of the South. And then I was thinking, with her expertise, that we could go to other shelters and help. And Walker County could kind of be the shelter behind the... So I guess I'm here because my disappointment was when I was watching the news about the meeting last month, and you said that you wanted to put animal control together and the director, I mean, and the shelter together and let her go, or have her fired, is I think what they used on the news.
I would like to speak up to that real quick. That was a lie. No board member has ever said we wanted to fire Emily.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, but that was said on the news. So it's...
Misinformation.
Yes. But, so anyway, it just kind of got my attention, and that's why I'm here. Because I just wanted to say, you know, this is in the works, and I've got my board together, and I've got my bylaws, and I'm trying to get all the paperwork. It's a lot of work. But anyway, it's because of Emily and her staff. Because I, you know, I just think Walker County has come leaps and bounds of when it was when I moved here in 1997. And I want to thank them, and I want to thank y'all. But the other thing I want to say real quickly is, and I don't know exactly how it works on y'all's board, but spay and neuter is, is the answer. It is the only way that we are going to be able to get a hold of all these animals and the intake that they have. And I would hope that y'all would consider working on the spay and neuter, mandatory spay and neuter laws, and maybe fees for breeding licenses so that people have to pay a large amount for a breeding license to breed their dog, and fines for the dogs that are running loose and that are, you know, out there creating more puppies, which are creating more animals coming in, kittens and animals coming into the shelter. So it's something that can be done. Tallulah McGee is from Lookout Mountain. She actually ran a foundation up there, and then she went down to Beaufort County, and she has really changed the whole numbers with mandatory spay and neuter. All her intake numbers are much, much, much lower. She has, she worked with the city, the city and county councilmen and women, and they have, your pit bull has to be spayed and neutered. I mean, she, and I know that if she were in town, she would love to come and maybe meet, and she could kind of talk about the procedures and policies. I'm not as familiar. I'm certainly not in, you know, a shelter director, but I just know that there are ways that we could work with this and make their job a little bit, not easier is never the right word, but where it's, it's not so time-consuming with all these intakes. So I'd love for you to think about that, and thank you for letting me come again. I have appreciated being here, and again, thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move forward then on our agenda. Appreciate everyone being here, and thank you for your patience. Okay, under new business, we have a resolution, R 2522. This is a little bit long, unfortunately, but I think it's important that I, that I do read this, as we do most all of our resolutions, and this one being somewhat unique. Resolution R 2522, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, to call for a special referendum election to permit Walker County, Georgia, to issue license for the package sales of distilled spirits within the unincorporated limits of Walker County. Whereas, Section 3-4-41 of the Official Code of Georgia annotated provides that in the event governing authorities of any county desires to execute the power authorized by Section 3-4-41 of the Code, excuse me, of the Official Code of Georgia annotated, which section provides that the county may authorize, through proper resolution or ordinance, the issuance of license for the package sale of distilled spirits. And whereas, Section 3-441A of the Official Code of Georgia annotated provides that such authorization is conducted upon a special referendum election wherein voters of the county vote on the question of whether or not the governing authority of the county shall be permitted to issue license for the package sale of distilled spirits. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Walker County has determined it is desirable to exercise the power authorized by Section 3-4-41A of the Official Code of Georgia annotated within Walker County, provided more than one-half of the voters cast in a special referendum election are in favor of issuing licenses for the package sale of distilled spirits. And whereas, Section 21-2, excuse me, 21-2-540 of the Official Code of Georgia annotated, designated that Tuesday after the first Monday in November, as the date of which a special referendum election may be held for the purpose of a referendum called under Section 3-4-41A of the Official Code of Georgia annotated, and whereas, there has not, there has been no special referendum election held by Walker County to determine whether its governing authority shall be permitted to issue licenses for the package sale of distilled spirits within the unincorporated limits of Walker County within the two-year period immediately preceding the date of this resolution. And therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the Board of Elections and registration for Walker County, Georgia is hereby authorized to issue notice of the call of a special referendum election to be held on November the 8th, 2022, for the purpose of submitting to the voters of Walker County the question of whether or not the Board of Commissioners of Walker County shall be permitted to issue licenses for package sales of distilled spirits within the unincorporated limits of Walker County. Further resolved, that the following notice of the special referendum election be published once a week for four weeks immediately preceding the date of the special referendum election in the official legal organ of Walker County, Georgia. It says, "Walker County, Georgia, notice to all special referendum elections. Notice is hereby given that Walker County, Georgia, will hold a special referendum election on Tuesday, November the 8th, 2022, for the purpose of voting on the question of whether or not the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, shall be permitted to issue licenses for the package sale of distilled spirits within the unincorporated limits of Walker County. The ballot will read as follow. Shall the issuance of licenses for the package sale of distilled spirits within the unincorporated limits of Walker County be approved?" Question mark. Then there's a place to mark yes or a place to mark no. Those desiring to vote in favor of the issuance of the license shall vote yes. Those desiring to vote against the issuance of license shall vote no. Only those registered, excuse me, only those voters registered in Walker County, Georgia, shall be allowed to vote in the special referendum election. Further resolved, that the county clerk is directed to notify the Board of Elections and Registrations through the election superintendent of the referendum by forwarding a copy of this resolution. Further resolved, that upon the receipt of this resolution, the election superintendent shall issue the call and shall conduct the election in the manner prescribed in OCGA Further resolved, that the registration book to register voters to vote in the special referendum elections are to be held open until the 11th day of October, 2022. So resolved and adopted the 9th day of June, 2022. So is there any board members that would like to speak to this resolution?
No, sir.
Okay. Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve Resolution R 2522?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakenmore. Do we have a second?
David.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution is approved unanimously. Okay, we have a resolution here based off of the request from our regional library board. It says, "Resolution R 26-22, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a member of the Rossville Public Library Board. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. And whereas, one of the duties delegated to the commission, excuse me, to the chairman of the board is to appoint members to all committees of the board with the approval of the board. And whereas, OCGA 20-5-42A provides that the county board of trustees shall consist of at least one appointee from each governmental agency financially supporting the library on a regular basis. And whereas, OCGA 20-5-42B provides that the regional board of library trustees shall consist of a trustee serving one on member county boards who are appointed to the regional board by each county board for a term specified in writing pursuant to its constitution and bylaws of the library system. Whereas, a vacancy will soon exist on the Rossville Library Board due to the expiration of term of Lori Cornell. Whereas Chairman Whitfield submitted the following appointment to serve..." Whereas Chairman Whitfield submitted the following appointment to serve on the Rossville Public Library Board, which would also be Lori Cornell, for the term beginning on July 1st, 2022, and ending on June 30th, 2025. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County that the appointment of Lori Cornell is approved, so resolved and adopted the 9th day of June, 2022. And in the packet, you will have a letter of recommendation from Ms. Lisa Eubanks, the Director of the Cherokee Regional Library System, asking that she be reappointed for this position. I concur with that recommendation, so at this time, I would like to make the motion to this board that we reappoint Ms. Lori Cornell to the Library Board as requested.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution is approved, and she will be reappointed for another term. There is a letter going to her as well of her reappointment. And if it's okay with the, the board members here, we have a very similar resolution here. Resolution R 2722, but this is for a library appointment to the LaFette Walker County Board. This also come in the same letter from Ms. Lisa Eubanks, asking for the reappointment of Kay Thurman. So the only difference here is that it's the LaFette Walker County Library Board, Kay Thurman for the term of July 1, 2022, ending as well on June 30th, 2025. So I'd like to make the motion to this board that we honor this request and reappoint Ms. Kay to the Walker LaFette Library Board. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Hart. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this also passes, and we reappoint her to the board, and we very much appreciate both of them willing to continue to serve. We have a letter for both of them, and also a letter going to Ms. Lisa Eubanks notifying her of this approvals. Thank y'all for that. Okay, the next item is the item that we did amend our agenda for the lease agreement, and I'd like to read this agreement, and then we'll have some discussion on this. This lease agreement, lease, is entered into between Walker County, Georgia, a political subdivision of the state of Georgia, Leaseor, and Valley Mechanical, Inc., Lee C. Number one, lease premises. Leaseor leases to Lee C. a certain tract of unimproved land surrounded by a chain-linked fencing located on Maple Street, Rossville, Walker County, Georgia, being tax mapping partial number 2007 dash 003, referred here going forward as premises. Number two, lease term. The term of this lease is for one year, beginning on June the 1st, 2022, and ending May 31st, 2022, is the lease term. Number three, rent. Lee C. shall pay to Leaseor a monthly rent of $1,500 per month. Rent shall be due on the first day of each month of the lease term. Rent of the entire non-prorated month of June, 2022, shall be due on the date that the tenant signs this lease agreement. Number four, default. If one, Lee C. defaults in the payment of the rent for 10 days after the due date, or two, if Lee C. fails to abide by any other obligations of this lease agreement and fails after notice to cure said default within 10 days, then Leaseor may, on option, immediately terminate this lease agreement by, excuse me, by providing notice to Lee C., and Lee C. shall immediately thereafter surrender possession of the premises to Leaseor and remove all of Lee C.'s personal property from the premises. Number five, use of lease premises. The premises shall be used by Lee C. for the purpose of storage of its personal property. Any other use of the premises by Lee C. must be pre-approved in writing by Leaseor. Lee C. uses the premises shall be in compliance with all laws and ordinances. Six, acceptance of the premises. Lee C. accepts the premises in the condition in which now exists as suitable for Lee C.'s use of the premises. Lee C. shall not make any improvements or changes to the premises without the written approval of Leaseor. Lee C. shall return the premises to Leaseor in the same condition as existed at the beginning of the lease term. Liability and insurance. Number seven, Lee C. shall indemnify and hold harmless Leaseor from any claims for any damages, including personal injury or property damages arising out of the use of the premises by Lee C. or any third party, except for the damages that are the result of the negligence of Leaseor. Lee C. shall add Leaseor as an additional insured on Lee C.'s general liability insurance policy, and Lee C. shall provide lessor with a copy of certificate of insurance to Leaseor. Number eight, notice. Any notices that are to be given pursuant to the lease agreement shall be delivered by one of the following methods: certified mail, email, hand delivery to the following addresses. Leaseor, Walker County Government, Attention, Commission Chairman, 101 South Duke Street, P.O. Box 445, LaFette, Georgia, 30728, or the email address is commissioner@walkerga.us. Lee C., Valley Mechanical, Inc., Attention Greg Whitlock, at 608 Salem Road, Rossville, Georgia, 30741, and his associated email address. Number nine, entire agreement. This agreement constitutes the entire agreement between Leaseor and Lee C. regarding the lease of the premises. Any modifications to the lease agreement must be in writing and signed by both Leaseor and Lee C., as a place to be signed by the Chairman of Walker County and a place to be signed by Valley Mechanical. Valley Mechanical is a longtime business in Walker County. They employ a lot of, of, of Walker County residents. They have had a lot of business growth. They have been awarded several big contracts, and they have been looking for additional rental space for both warehouse indoor and warehouse and, and outdoor storage space. And so it was brought to our attention that they needed to utilize this premises in Rossville. This is a level partial that used to be a parking lot of the Coats America Building. So it's actually across the side street of the Coats America Building. It's already fenced in, it's been fenced for years, and so they need to use this to store of large items outdoors as part of their manufacturing process. So they approached us and said this is what they would be willing to pay, and they needed this executed as soon as possible. So this all come together just in the last couple of days, and Commissioner Blakemore did a lot of facilitating between Valley Mechanical and Communicating was, was a big help. David Gottlieb drafted the lease. We wanted to keep it very simple because we're talking about a vacant lot. So it's really straightforward, pretty simple, and we want to support their growth, and they're actually even trying to grow even more, to hire even more employees. So is there any questions of the board on this lease?
Chairman, if I may, there is one type of graphical error. That is in paragraph two on the lease term, the end of the lease term would be May 31, 2023, obviously instead of 22.
Okay, yeah, that's just a typo. Thank you for catching that, because I did not catch that.
If you decide to approve it, we will make that revision, so any resolution would be, or vote would be contingent of that.
Otherwise, it's already expired. Okay, any other questions, concerns, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve whether provision our attorney set forth.
Okay, so we do have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore to approve this with a corrected lease term of one year per our attorney on just the typo there, it's just strictly a typo that we missed. So do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any other discussion of the board?
Yes, sir.
Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We will approve this on our end, and then we will be submitting this to Mr. Whitlock for their execution, and we will get that one typo. It does say one year, we just gotta get the year right. Okay, there you go. Okay, our monthly statistical report, and due to the sake of time, I'll kind of just hit some high points here. This is in the packet, it's also online. Our animal shelter intake in May was 95 dogs and 78 cats. They were able to get 17 dogs and 17 cats, both adopted out locally, which is always great. Return to owner, 12 dogs and five cats. Our code enforcement, 285 properties in compliance, 30 citations, roadside trash, 5,040 pounds. Our fire department did a great job getting 15 more smoke alarms installed. Mountain Cove Farms was very, very busy this spring. Excuse me, they had 167 nights stayed in April and 189 stays in May. New single home construction is still strong in Walker County with 12 single-family permits, both in April and May each. We also had 2,306 transit trips, so you're seeing our transit numbers come up, and I'm sure that's a lot of reflection on fuel and gas prices, as well as our transit is now running a Saturday schedule, so it gives people more opportunities. So these are just some of the highlights. A full report would be online, is in the packet. At this time, we come to our commissioner comments, so as always, we'll start with our District One Commissioner, Commissioner Blakemore.
I just appreciate everybody coming out and getting involved in your government, letting your voice be heard to help us make better decisions. And as always, if I can help you, please call, text, or email, and I'll get back to you soon as I can. Thank you.
Thank you for, folks, for sticking around. I, I had wanted to, to get this out earlier when we had a packed house here, but our, our Walker County Farmers Market, guys, I've said something about it before, and I'm gonna say it again, our produce is rolling in. That Farmers Market's been in existence for 17 years, and as y'all well know, you see the fuel prices and the way things are. We, we need to really support, we've got to get out and support this Farmers Market, or we're gonna lose it. And, and I, I can't say enough how important it is, like I said, I, I'll use an example. We'll pack the house out if we talk about one thing that has to do with agricultural property. Everybody's in wanting to get their two cents worth in. Well, now let's put our, let's put, let's put our, ourselves to work, and if we're that concerned, then the one, the agriculture community ought to be the first one shopping the Farmers Market, along with all of us, and I just challenge everybody to please, and that's not just our Walker County Farmers Market, we've got several others that are coming up in the area. Support all of our local grown vegetables, because you, it, it, it could be a time that that's all you get, and I, I just, I'm real passionate about that, and I know that they work very hard, a lot of people have worked very hard for, like I said, for the past 17 years to keep it open, and we've got to, we need to support it. So I just, I'd like to see, like to put out a challenge to everybody out there.
Mark, real quick, don't they take SNAP and?
They take SNAP and EBT, and they double your amount. If you, if you've got a, if you're, if you're on a SNAP or EBT, like a, a, the food card or, they'll double what the value is. I mean, it's a, it's a win-win, and, and one thing I did want to throw in there, and I wanted to ask Emily about it, just to, just as, as a brainstorm, but, you know, I, I think maybe even our shelter could get involved and, and have some, have a couple of, of adoptive animals there at the days of these things, maybe, and, and kind of give, give it a little more, you know, of a draw, and, and help, help the shelter and help the Farmers Market. So I, I just really, really wish that we would kind of talk to you neighbors and everybody, get out there, and let's support our local agricultural period, okay? Thank you.
Wednesday and Saturday?
Wednesday and Saturday.
Rock Springs.
That's it, Rock Springs at, at the Ag Center there, behind the Civic Center.
Right. I want to give a shout out to the Safety Committee for Walker County. Now, David Brown is not here, Becky is here, but you all just received a $107,000 grant from ACCG for employee safety enhancement, so a good shout out to that group. I know Robert Meish has been quite often, I've met with him a couple of times, but not only to them, but the employees of Walker County who strive to be safe, have pretty good safety records, obviously we got a big grant back from them, so that's a good thing. Second thing I want to point out, yeah, there's something back there in the back, I see you guys back there. The American Legion Post here in LaFette on Monday, June 20th, is doing a program for women that have served in Walker County in the military, so if you've got time to go by there, I know our community leader's gonna be there, but a good thing they're doing. Robert?
Thank you, sir. So I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, certainly appreciate y'all coming. Just also want to tell all of our county employees, thank you for the hard work that you do, the great job that you do. This event is actually taking place in Commissioner Blakemore's district, the Free Kids Fishing Rodeo at the, at the ponds up there on Lake Street, from 6 until 11, I'm sorry, it's a Saturday, 6:11, at 9:00 a.m.
This Saturday.
This Saturday. No fishing licenses required, prizes will be awarded, so take a kid fishing. That's, I love to fish, and anytime someone can take a kid to fish, that's a good deal. Something else I want to mention in District Four, Tales and Trails, Emily mentioned that earlier, it's also Saturday, the 11th, from 9 to 1, at Luba Lake, and it looks like a lot of fun, live music, food trucks, so a great event for folks to go see, and I also want to say, support our local ag. We, I've been to the Farmers Market, taken produce to the Farmers Market, it's a, it's a great place, so, so go buy some produce. Thank y'all.
Yeah, thank you for bringing up Commissioner Stoltz about the fishing event.
Yes, sir.
This is for kids, and so parents can go and help, but parents are supposed to stand behind the kids, beside the kids, whatever, to fish. But, you know, the city of Rossville's done a great job with this, and they've reached out to people local in the community that has made donations to make sure that a kid having a fishing rod and reel for the event is not a barrier. So they've had people that have donated money, have donated rods and reels that are easy for kids to use, and so if you're out there watching and you want to take your kid fishing and you don't have fishing supplies, or maybe you just don't know a lot about fishing, but you know your kids will have a lot of fun, go, and they should have enough, hopefully, fishing rods and reels to provide the kids that want to fish, so they don't want that to be a barrier.
And DNR is gonna be stocking as well.
Oh, good.
So have some chances to catch some.
Oh, yeah, Mayor Chairman Whitfield will be there baiting hooks. He forgot to mention.
That didn't make my agenda until just now.
There you go. That would be good.
All right, also too, I want to echo what Commissioner Ashby said about the Farmers Market. We've got a phenomenal Farmers Market. There's, leaders in other communities have told me, they're trying to emulate our Farmers Market because it's been so well put together, and so to me, the more Farmers Markets, the better. You know, you can't have too many Farmers Markets. It's, 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 it's food we all gotta have, and they don't always all have the same thing or the same quantities, and so as Commissioner Ashby said, you know, patronize and support them all, and don't forget about them, and especially those that are on the, those programs that you can double your money value. That's, that's kind of a no-brainer.
That's a no-brainer.
Because if you go to the supermarket, they're not able to do that, but Farmer Markets can, so that makes them just a super added value. Also too, I want to give a shout out to our great partners at the City of LaFette. They did a phenomenal job with the Honeybee. I saw David Hamilton, who's the city manager of LaFette today at another meeting we both happened to be at, and somebody asked him, how many people attended Honeybee? And he said their, their best estimates through their third-party estimating process was somewhere probably throughout the day around 85,000 people. So that was a phenomenal turnout. That's another event that is, you know, free for the families, for people to come out, there's no cost of parking, no cost for the blowups for the kids, the entertainment's free, so it's all family fun. The City of LaFette, the staff, the leadership did a phenomenal job, got to come down and be at the Honeybee for a little while myself, and it was just a great day. And so hats off to our friends and partners at LaFette. Saw Andy Arnold today, and he was complaining he was still tired. So I guess he just did way too much dancing. That's all they think I can figure, just way too much dancing. But anyway, that concludes our commissioners' comments. I do need to make a motion that we go into executive session, I know we need to discuss cybersecurity and also personnel, was there?
And real estate.
And real estate. So cybersecurity, personnel, and real estate, like to make that motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion on those motions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will stand adjourned, we will be back after the executive session.
Hi, I'm Joe Leguie, Public Relations Director for Walker County Government. The board has just entered executive session. This is a process that allows elected officials to discuss a specific, sensitive topic behind closed doors. These are topics that are exempt from the Georgia Open Meetings Act. Executive session topics must fall into one of three categories: litigation, real estate or personnel matters. In terms of litigation, the need may arise for the board to consult with the county attorney on pending or potential lawsuits, settlements, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought by or against Walker County Government, its officers, or employees. Real estate covers to Real estate covers discussions regarding the future purchase or acquisition, disposal, or release of property. Personnel matters would cover the discussion or deliberation on the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal of a Walker County Government officer or employee. Now, if a vote is needed pertaining to an issue discussed in the executive session, it must be taken in an open meeting, otherwise it is not binding. Thanks for watching and we'll be back in a bit.
Okay, it is Thursday, June the 9th at 10:40 p.m. We're going to call this back to order, but before we close out our meeting, I know we've got a couple of people here that wanted to speak, they didn't realize they needed to speak earlier, so we're going to make an exception here tonight and let you come up and have your five minutes.
Can you go first?
Oh, yes, fine. I'm sorry, yes, that's fine. Just please state your name a few weeks, sir.
My name is Lee Frye and first off, I just wanted to ask a question. The resolution for the distilled drinks, if we were to make a petition, is there any way that petition would be able to overrule that resolution? Like vote, I guess you could say? Like if we got a petition together that says that so many number of people don't agree with the vote and there's some way we might overrule that resolution? Is there any way we could do that?
Well, I'm not sure all the legal, I know one way that you could overrule it is this is be on the ballot in November for the voters in the county to vote on.
But that's what we were trying to avoid, I guess.
But why do you want to take the vote, the option away from the voters? If, and I'm just being-
Because, well, so Shannon and I remember a few years back, we dealt with the whole feat between schools and churches thing and it was one of the most wacky things I think I've ever spoke at. And it was just something that we didn't even want to have on the ballot because it just brings so much destruction because alcohol is just like, not even like, I have like statistics here that I would have said this afternoon if I knew to speak early, but like, there was like whole statistics of like 11,000 people dying each year from drunk driving and that would be like one person in every 45 minutes be dead because of drunk driver. And just the whole, just destruction and vile nature of alcohol, just ruining everything and like, I don't see a point to just keep having more of it being sold when it's already causing a problem. And there's no way to fix it because it's, you can't, the last time we've tried to ban it was the 18th amendment in the 1919s, but even that didn't work because then it got overruled a few years later with the next amendment. But it was just something that we knew, like, yes, we have freedoms, but sometimes we got to have laws in place to keep people safe because you just let alcohol like get in people's lives, you're just not going to have a fun time with it. And it's just, there's very, like, there was another statistic I found that it was alcohol-induced or it was basically violent crimes with the perpetrator being under the influence and it was just like, it was massive and all this other stuff, but it's just something that me and my dad thought, you know, this doesn't need to be on the ballot because it's already destroying lives everywhere in the United States and we just don't want it to affect more people's lives here in Walker County when it's already being sold and we just don't want it being sold even more to allow that person to fall to that destructive nature of that sort of drink. So that's what I had to say, I'll let him say more, but that's just my concerns that I wanted to voice to you.
Thank you for being a young man enough to stand up and voice your concerns and stand up for your beliefs. I commend you for that. I do believe personally that in this country that we do have, and the reason that there's a resolution is there are people that wanted it on the ballot.
Yeah.
But the citizens will be, you know, like I said, that at the end of the day, it would be a decision, that we won't make that decision, but the populace will. But thank you for voicing your opinion and standing up for what you believe, man. That's awesome.
But thank you so very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Please state your name, of course, if you will.
My name is Eddie Frye. I lived in Rossville, graduated Rossville High School in 1987, pastor at Mountview Baptist Church in Rossville. I lived in Lafette, been down here for two, year and a half, also own business. And I just have seven questions. Number one, on a resolution before, after, before the resolution was voted on, usually we had a time to speak. Did that change to that?
No, it was on our agenda for public comment before any new business. And so that's when there was a lot of people that was talking about the animals and different things. That was for any public comment that anybody could speak. And I apologize, I didn't make that more clear, that anybody could speak on any topic and that's why we've allowed to y'all speak now, which is the first time we've done this. But public comment was on the agenda after the informational.
So as my son was talking, if I can get a petition of 1,000 people, would y'all be able to change and take it off the ballot?
Well, I mean, if you're looking from a legal perspective, I mean, the resolution has been passed, all the resolution is doing is, these guys are, I'm sorry, the board is not taking a position with regard to packaged sales of distilled spirits. They're simply putting it on the ballot for the voters to decide.
Okay, then I have a question for each one of you. Commissioner Blake Moore, are you 100% for this?
No, I'm not for it. I'm for what the voters want.
Okay, so it's yes or no, you're for what the votes wants, but do you want this to happen? It's a yes or no question?
No, I do not drink liquor.
Okay. Do you want it to happen?
I don't think that's a fair question. And I'm not trying, I'll answer the question, but my position is, like I said, is to represent the citizens and we were asked to put it on the referendum so that the citizens could vote. So I won't, I mean, I believe the right answer is that the citizens should make that decision. I don't, if you choose to drink or not, that's your choice and I don't know that that's, you know, somebody's personal life is what we would talk about. I don't-
Okay, so Shannon?
I don't consume alcohol at all, never have, just have no desire to, don't believe that I should, you know, consume alcohol, but I don't think I'm the person that should block the voters from voting on the referendum. Because we live in a nation where the voters are supposed to set the direction of their local community and their local government. So, you know, and as you noticed tonight, it's the chair, since there wasn't a tie, I didn't get to vote here. But if I go to the poll in voting November, I'm going to vote no at the poll, but the citizens of the county will speak for the direction of the county.
So I'm the same vote as Shannon. I don't drink, but I think it's up to the voters. Mark said the voters want it on the ballot, it's on the ballot. I will vote no, I don't even need it in Walker County, but if it passes, and it passes, then I support the people. We're here to represent the majority of the people.
Yes, sir. I've had constituents ask for it to be on the ballot. I've had constituents not want it on the ballot. And I feel as though it's the voter's choice. If you and your thousand folks that, you know, you could rally up, I mean, that'd be a thousand votes against it, you know? And my opinion is that's probably how this will come down, is that there will be a lot of folks against it and I'm sure there'll be some for it, but I think it's the choice of the voters. I think that's just one of the freedoms that we have.
Okay, I would just like to say thank you for your time. No, I've got 30 seconds, but I would ask that, I'm going to get the word out, the association, the bad association, I will be talking with Eddie later on this afternoon.
Yes, sir.
I will let everybody and all the churches know, and we're going to oppose this, I will tell you this, I understand politics and I do know this, when something's put on a ballot and the people don't really understand what's there, they just mark what comes first. I know that. I know how things work.
Well, if you read the question that's going to be on the ballot, I mean, this is straightforward as any question that I've seen on a ballot. I'll find it.
The reason I'm so passionate about this, I'll give you two reasons. Number one, my uncle, he said he wasn't an alcoholic, but he drunk at home, got on a motorcycle. He lived over in North Georgia, Beverly Hills, if you know where that's at, got on a motorcycle, ran off the road, a stick went through his throat, came up the back. Would have killed him. My family, there's a lot of drunks in my family. This is why I'm passionate about this. And I'm not going to stand back and I'm not going to keep quiet about this. Before, I was the same way and I've run in 760 petitions signed and I give it to you.
That's right.
And I was, my word was, if you take it off, I'll vote for you and I'll take and do whatever I can to get you elected. It's the same with everybody else. But I tell you this, I'm going to take a stand, I'm going to make sure that everybody knows and I pray that it is defeated. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. There was no action coming out of executive session, so there's no other business before us, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion is adjourned.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Ashby, all in favor, say aye. We are adjourned at 10:51. Thank you all for being here and productive meeting.